It looks like it's nine o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order. Jury, I'm gonna note that Bill and Laura are both out today. We know that for sure. All right, so first item is approval of the August 28 minutes. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections for those minutes? Did everyone get a chance to look at them? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion of approval.
A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Next item is approval of the agenda. Today's consent calendar includes agenda items number three through 12. The regular agenda items are 13 through 19. Audience, if you don't have a copy of today's agenda, there's an item back on the bookshelf. If there's any, are there any questions or discussion about today's agenda? Anything additions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second for today's approval of today's agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, PJ, take it away.
All right. PJ, County Director, Planning Department, Consent Calendar. The filing items have been placed on the consent calendar for action to be placed on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the Planning, Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item three, Conditional Use Permit Review 0839 for Track Patrick and Marlene Shealy to review an accessory structure prior to a primary structure in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 0839 with eight conditions. Item four, Conditional Use Permit Review 1318, Rochford Country Club, Community Club, Anna Burzley on as the agent, to review a community center in suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1318 with nine conditions. Item five, Conditional Use Permit Review 1523, Perry and Gretchen Strombeck, to review a caretaker's residence on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1523 with seven conditions. Item six, Conditional Use Permit Review 1524, Founding Fathers LLC, to review a bell tower signed to be 50-foot tall with total height of the letters to be 35 feet tall in a highway service district. Staff recommends to continue the review of Conditional Use Permit 1524 to the October 9, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item seven, Conditional Use Permit Review 1525, Rushmore Shadows LLC, to review a recreational resort with the addition of 45 RV sites on the subject property in a highway service district. Staff recommends to continue the review of Conditional Use Permit 1525 to the October 23, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item eight, Conditional Use Permit Review 1620, Perry and Vicki Van Newkirk, to review an accessory structure would be a pole barn prior to a principal structure on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of Conditional Use Permit 1620 to the September 25, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item nine, Conditional Use Permit Review 1627, Jean and Carleen VanderWurt, for Thrive Properties LLC, to review a vacation home rental on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of Conditional Use Permit 1627 to the October 9, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 10, Conditional Use Permit Review 1629, for Highmark Incorporated, to review a contractor's storage yard on the subject property during the construction of Rapid City Southside Sewer Line Project in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1629 with 12 conditions. Item 11, Vacation of Easement 1704, Dana Rogers, to vacate or relocate an existing access easement and to add a 40-foot-wide private access easement. Staff recommends to continue Vacation of Easement 1704 to the October 23, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item 17, Minor Platt 1723 and Subdivision Regulation Variant 1708 for Dustin Hunsacker to create Lot 2 and 3 of Lower Spring Creek subdivision and to waive plating requirements. Staff recommends approval of Subdivision Regulation Variant 1708 and approval of Minor Platt 1723 with 10 conditions.
Are there any items that staff would like to remove from the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Anyone on the commission would like to move anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, anyone from the audience would like to move anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Move to approve consent calendar items three through 12 as listed.
Motion.
A second.
Motion and a second. To approve the agenda as printed for the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That carries us to the next item. PJ, I just want to make one note to the audience today. Just so everyone in the audience is aware, when we vote on items today, if it's not a vote of at least four individuals that are on the commission today, it may not pass. It's a majority of the commission, not a majority of those sitting here today. And since we're missing two commissioners, I just want to point that out, that it may or may not pass depending on the number of votes that are cast here. All right, go ahead, PJ.
All right. Item 13 is Plan Unit Development Review 0609. The only reason it's not on the consent calendar is I hadn't heard back from the new property manager in time to know what the conditions were gonna be. This was before you previously. Simran Mobile Home Park off on Sturgis Road has a number of mobile homes on the property. It recently, the company has recently hired a new property manager who was unfamiliar with the PUD and was unfamiliar with the lot itself. She manages two other properties in the area. She said staff has been in contact with her. And since speaking with her, she's fixed all the violations that we have found. One was moving a mobile home onto the property without a permit and also addressing on a few of the structures in the mobile home park. And staff would recommend approval of the extension of Plan Unit Development 0607 with 20 conditions.
All right. Any questions for staff? Is the applicant here to discuss?
No, she is not.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Plan Unit Development PU 06-07 with the 20 conditions listed.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Brings us to item 14.
Item 14 is Conditional Use Permit 1728. This is before you a few times. It was continued most recently. This is for subject property. Three of three listed on the overhead. The parcel actually has three distinct pieces to it, but we're mainly concerned about section three of three. What the applicant is proposing is, if you look in the top left where you see A, B, C, everything kind of grouped to the left, that's where there's existing signs on the subject property now. The applicant's request is to stagger those signs out a little bit further, which would mean taking the signs down and putting them back up. The proposal is the one on the bottom right. They would be within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district and they would be within 1,500 feet of each other. He'd also still need to obtain signed permits from our office after the Conditional Use Permit, if the Conditional Use Permit is approved. It was most recently continued because Commissioner Hancock had asked to see what the signs were, I believe, going to be constructed or looked like. So this is the sign that was approved in 2016 across the street on the owner's. It's the same property, just across the street. They are made, those are metal poles, not wooden poles. These are close-ups that they, these are photos that the applicant has provided. We won't go to that one yet. But the applicant is in the audience if there's any questions from the commissioners.
Any questions for PJ? Would the applicant like to speak?
I'm not sure what, I'm just here to listen.
Okay. Any questions?
I do have one question. PJ, I'm, so one of these three photographs at the bottom of this paper that you included for us, is that, that is, one of those is an example of the V sign?
Yep, so the pictures on the bottom, because it was continued last time because Commissioner Hancock wanted to see them. Those are indications of what was presented during the meeting. Those photos were there. So if I can see a quick, can I approach real quick?
Well, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, all three of these are the ones across the street.
Okay, and one of these is a V sign?
They both are.
Yes, okay. So I guess my question is, is that these look like the angle of the V is much greater than the angle of the V that currently exists on the current sign that's there, not across the street, but the one that's on the property we're talking about, number three on, you know, when we have. So that sign looks to me like it's a V like this. The one that's currently existing, which I think is labeled number three or C maybe. And it looks to me like these are more like this.
Okay.
Is that accurate?
That's what it appears to me from the picture, yes.
That's right. So is there any, is there any control on, I mean, if you open it up, if the angle becomes 180 degrees, then you've got a sign like this.
It wouldn't be a V. But no, we don't, no, we don't control it by angle. If it was 179, we haven't run into that.
That's right. So there's no control on, because if the angle's like, you know, close to zero, then it becomes almost double-sided, you know. So I guess I think it's important to understand really how the intent of that.
Sure. That's a reasonable expectation, yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead.
PJ, you know, it doesn't seem right for me. I guess I would have been under the impression that if we're going to allow signs under 1,500 feet, which is our ordinance, it would have to be a variance, wouldn't it? Instead of, how can we vary an ordinance by Conditional Use Permit?
And that question has come up a lot and.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yep, it is. And we've been doing it through Conditional Use Permits. We haven't adjusted that. If we, if you want to do it through a variance, we could. We've been doing it as long as it's coming to compliance with that ordinance. We've been doing it through Conditional Use Permits to allow it.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for staff?
I have two questions. So if it goes through as a Conditional Use Permit and for some reason there's objections to it in the future, the landowner would be at risk for putting these things in only to have them potentially not allowed if there were complaints or something along those lines in the future with the Conditional Use Permit, right? I mean, they're not, they're not within the zoning ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. So that was question one. Question two is, is it clear? I know that there were some questions two weeks ago about, is he going back with the exact same type sign? So if it's, if A is one-sided, is A going back as one-sided? B, one-sided, going back as one-sided? C, V-shaped, is it going back as V-shaped?
Good question for the applicant.
Okay. Sir, if you would.
My name's Cam Nash. I'm the agent for Laura Pancratz. And what was the question?
The question is, currently, sign A is, signs A and B are one-sided. Sign C is V-shaped. Are the proposed signs going back going to be similar where A is one-sided, B is one-sided, and C is V-shaped? Or are you planning on adding more face, more Vs, more?
As I understand it, they would like to just go ahead and put three signs, single-sided. Would be fine with them.
Any other questions? Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's the purpose of splitting them apart on the property rather than rebuilding them in their current location? Is it visibility or what is the reason?
He's just trying to make the property look nicer and to have them farther apart.
And if I understand correctly, PJ, you can correct me if I'm wrong about this. If he was to tear them down and rebuild them exactly where they're at, they would still have to get a Conditional Use Permit. They would still have to ask for a CUP to do that because those are grandfathered in because of the ordinances.
Correct.
So that's the reason why. And since they're falling apart, they're looking kind of shabby. The way I understand it after being in some of the meetings is that they're trying to do right by the area by cleaning them up and spreading them out. Problem is, the property owner doesn't own enough property to spread them out the distance that they would like to. So that's why they're asking for the Conditional Use Permit, just in general. And to make them nicer.
And the applicant is, assume Laura's the applicant for the plat, is also replating this property and subdividing off a portion and leaving the portion that would have proposed A, B, and C in their current locations on the remaining unplatted portion of the property.
Correct. Maybe I should have said frontage availability when it's all said and done. Any other questions for the applicant or PJ?
Why not put up, why not take the three and put up two to be in accordance with the ordinance and then maybe ask for one of them to be, maybe sign A or B be V-shaped? So you have the same sign frontage, let me say, the sign square footage versus the, versus going into what I would call an at-risk position for the signs under the Conditional Use Permit.
Could we do two V-shaped signs over 1,500 feet apart on that property? That way we'd get it down to where we're just out of compliance with being in the zoning district 1,500 feet. But we could do two V-shaped like that and put it on approximately on those locations.
This was a part of the minor layout plat that the applicant provided on Friday showing where the, if they were to do two V-shaped signs, where they would be on the property.
And does that meet all of the ordinance? All of the zoning ordinances?
Except for being within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district, yes. So you can still go through with the Conditional Use Permit. And you're actually would be approving less than he's asking, than the original request.
Right. The zoning, the residential zoning district is where across the road.
Uh.
Hi, Ray.
Let me get back to the, hold on, let's see if I can. I don't know if we have zoning in here. I know to the southwest, there's a PUD. I don't think there's a zoning picture in here.
Oh, I found it.
And you have LDR up to the north. PUD is not shown on here.
Sir, regardless, you still gotta have a CUP because it's gonna be within 1,500 feet of a residential. Any other questions?
I have a question, PJ.
Go ahead, Sonny.
You had this one here, an alternative. If they decided to go with the alternative, how would that affect the CUP? Would it be amended or have to start over?
No, they're actually gonna be approving, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, but they're, you'd be approving less than what they originally had asked for. And from my experiences, it'd be okay moving forward unless there's anybody that disagrees with that. Nope.
Go ahead, Kathy.
If we pursue this alternative where there's two signs and one of them or both of them are V signs, I'd like to see, I'd like to have consideration given to adding a recommendation so that the V angle is no greater than the angle of the existing sign now. So that, right now, you know what I'm saying? So that, to have some control of that angle so they really don't become two signs.
How would that affect that sign that you have to the far right?
I'm sure that wouldn't be over the lot line either, right?
Yeah, yeah, we would have, the angle is just to allow existing traffic to see it.
Right.
You know, so if we could do that with some reason. Because it's, the intent is definitely not to make two signs like that. It's just to have the angle so that you can hit the oncoming traffic.
Right.
That's what that's for.
So we could go out and check to see what the angle of the existing V shape is? And then say, have to meet or be less than that?
Right, that's right.
That'd be all right with you?
Yeah.
So just have the word.
As I say, is that, that's acceptable?
Yes. The applicant said that, the agent said yes.
All right. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak? Ma'am, just a second, we'll have you come up. Is there anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Come on up, please.
Well, I have a little speech, but ah! But it concerns the 1,500 feet. But if those are two.
Come up, come up to the mic and introduce yourself, please.
Okay. I'm Kathy Calhoun. And I just have a concern if those two signs do not end up being 1,500 feet apart. And I have a historical perspective to present to you if you want to hear it.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so, so the, I was involved with establishing the code nine years ago or whatever it was when the, when the county commission wanted to change, revise the sign codes. And at that time, the compromise was made to make it 1,500 feet. And I guess I'll just start. The task was to revise the county sign code in the best interest of three entities involved. These entities consisted of the interests of the property owner, like we have here, the sign companies, and the public. As I said, it took about a year to accomplish a compromise with this, with this process. The compromise took into account the property owners' need to advertise their attraction, the sign companies wanting to increase their market share with bigger and more abundant signs, and finally, the public, whose number one complaint in the state and the city of Rapid City was that there were too many billboards that obstructed the views that the public had come to see in the Black Hills. So our committee tried to balance the competing needs and interests to develop a reasonable compromise on spacing height and sign faces. This is not an easy task. Some of the sign companies felt that 500-foot spacing allowed by the state code was adequate. This is the spacing one sees from Rapid City to Box Elder. You know, the signs that go out from Rapid City to Box Elder on the right-hand side along the railroad track. The representatives of the public on our committee wanted really a mile between all the off-premise signs in the county. So eventually, we arrived at a compromise of 1,500 feet apart from 5,280 feet to 1,500 feet and from 500 feet for the companies to 1,500 feet. I ask you to please respect that process and not allow property owners to variance out the distance between below 1,500 feet. Ideally, the public would come to each meeting to speak up when the view shed is being compromised, but they don't come. They believe that they have elected officials in the county, at the county level that have the public point of view in mind. Thereby, when the planning commission is appointed, they assume that you also are to uphold the public's interest in keeping the Black Hills the beautiful attraction that it is by maintaining the codes worked out over the process of enacting the code with 1,500-foot spacing. So I have no objection of this if it's 1,500 feet between the signs. I think you probably ought to get some input from the property owners across the street or whatever to find out if they object. But that would be my statement. Thank you.
Any questions for Kathy?
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other members from the audience wish to speak on this item? All right. Any further discussion on our side here? Any last questions? PJ?
Sure. Well, I believe Commissioner Johnson wanted to add a condition in there about the angle of the sign. Have a proposal that the two proposed signs, if applied for as V-shaped, be no less than the angle of the existing V-shaped sign on the subject property.
No greater.
No greater.
Angle be no greater.
Ooh, thanks.
Yeah, but that's certainly the concept.
And we have in there two. So it limits it to two.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve Conditional Use Permit CU 17-28 as modified with this alternative with the two signs at the locations roughly shown on this, on this drawing and with the additional condition that requires the angle of a V sign to be no greater than the angle of the V sign that's currently on the property.
All right, there's a motion.
So CU 17 with 11 conditions and the spacing at 1,500 feet, is that correct? I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just, what did you say? We needed four positive votes here to?
That's correct, to move it forward.
I, frankly, I'm in favor of the motion and I think it's a good compromise. I hesitate to vote in favor of it because I don't think that Conditional Use Permit is the right way to vary the footage. I think it's an ordinance and it needs a variance, not a Conditional Use Permit. But yes, I'll probably vote in favor of it anyway.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll go ahead, Kathy.
I'd just like to comment. I share Commissioner Buskrood's concern about that and I actually inquired of PJ on that point because I, in reading through the ordinances point because in reading through the ordinances and even the ordinances that controls conditional use permit, I didn't see any provision that allowed that process to accomplish variances. But I'm not sure that if this is the precedent that you've been practicing, that maybe that's an issue that needs to be dealt with. But I'm, I guess I'm comfortable, you know, in that sense that this can be approved, but that question that has come up is dealt with as we move down the way.
I agree. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the motion on the table is to approve the modified version of CU seventeen dash twenty-eight. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. I believe that moves us to item number fifteen.
Item fifteen, County Board Report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from their August fourteenth and August twenty-eighth Planning Commission meetings, with the exception of vacation of plat for Walter Horton. This item was continued at the request of the Board and will be heard on September twenty-first Board of Commissioners' meeting.
Any questions for PJ? All right, item number sixteen, items from the public. Anyone from the public like to come up and speak? Seeing none, let's move on to item seventeen, items from the staff.
Item seventeen, first item A is building permit report for August two thousand seventeen. Should have those in front of you. Just really quick, a couple highlights. Single-family homes are up thirty-six percent over this time last year. We're at forty-five, I'm sorry, we took in seventeen last month. Last year at this time, we took in three. Year-to-date, we're at forty-five, sixty-one, excuse me, I'm going backwards on these.
The colors are throwing me off.
It's a new format. Garage and carports are up eighteen percent, last year at sixty-five, this year at seventy-seven. Non-residential additions are down eighty-eight percent. Part of that is due to, well, it seems like more people are building single-family homes, but also, I think, some of that has to do with when we changed around the codes for our building permits. Removals of mobile homes are up fifty-two percent, thirty-two over twenty-one last year. Overall, by the end of August, we had five-hundred-and-twenty-six building permits, and this time last year, we had four-hundred-and-twenty-seven for an increase of twenty-three percent and fifteen percent valuation.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, but the valuation's down, right? We're at forty-five, four, seventy-seven?
The average is down by six.
Oh, the average value, the average valuation, excuse me, sorry about that.
That's okay.
All right. Any further questions? All right, next one.
Next is the comprehensive plan. Their matrix is coming back at the end of the month for workshop set number three, set for Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. They have to run down to Colorado on Tuesday. We're going to have the Monday meeting at the Black Hills State University, Rapid City Campus, room one-twenty-four, one-twenty-six, same as last time. Hill City High School, the theater on Wednesday, and Wall Community Center on Thursday. Again, these are really important meetings because we're starting to get into land use now. We're getting into changing zoning, suggesting new zoning districts, and basically, all the issues that we've been having as far as land use and the current comprehensive plan not working right, this is really now the beginning of the work, is going to be this set of meetings. And with that, Rick Rust, who's the agent for Matrix, is asking for members of the Board of Commissioners and members of the Planning Commission to come in between ten and noon on the twenty-eighth to the Planning Department's conference room, and he'll have all the maps laid out. And you don't have to make an appointment and just show up, and we'll figure out what we need to do as far as open meeting regulations for that, so that you can come in and discuss with him and give your ideas and your suggestions and have him answer some questions for you. Staff will be doing that between one and three-thirty the day before, but he's asking for the elected officials and the appointed officials from the Board and the Planning Commission and other department heads as needed to come in on the twenty-eighth.
At what time?
On the twenty-eighth, any time between ten and noon.
PJ, can you send that out as a reminder email to all of us, just to kind of, so not, give us a synopsis of these and that workshop?
What, excuse me, what time will these meetings in, you know, the public meetings, University Center, Hill City, and Wall, what time will they begin?
They start at six P.M.
Six, okay.
And PJ, I'm going to ask another question because I'm on their email notification list. Do you know if they're sending out emails about these next meetings? Because I haven't seen anything come through there.
So we just got, the Matrix got them and confirmed that they got them last week. We were trying to get something in New Underwood, if you remember, but New Underwood was going to charge, so we didn't go to New Underwood because we don't have a budget for the meetings. So we went back, we were able to get the Wall Community Center. We're trying also to go for larger spaces because there's going to be more maps, there's going to be more walking around the room. It's not really going to be as much of a group discussion really what we're used to last time, last few meetings. So waiting for, to hear from New Underwood and then being able to get something confirmed in the other city, that's what delayed it about a week.
Okay, fair enough.
And from what I had seen, I know there's been some questions about the website. The Matrix oversees the website. We have no control of it, and it hasn't been updated since the last time.
Right.
But I have seen a lot of people are signing into it, so probably average about three or four a week, which is better than none.
That's true. Fair enough. Any further questions, comments, concerns? All right, item C.
Yep, next item in front of you, handed them out this morning, is just a copy of the Code of Conduct, which was approved by the Board of Commissioners in two thousand and fourteen. Just something we try to get out at the start of every, you know, after the elections and new members are on. So if there isn't anything you need to do, just sign that you've received this or acknowledge it, just kind of information for you. That's all I got.
And you said Michelle wanted to say something?
Oh, yeah, for that part, yes. Thank you.
Didn't want to cut you short.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. With the change in members with each, you know, periodically with the Planning Commission, we like to present the Code of Conduct, as well as briefly readvice the Commission as to expartee communications that will frequently occur in your position. You are, as an elected or appointed official officer, allowed to receive information, relevant information, from any source under state law. However, we like to remind Planning Commissioners not to make any promises. It's expected that you will keep an open mind pending presentation of evidence before the public body. Also, when you do receive such information, it is an ex-party communication. Information is shared with you from a citizen or another. It's important that any information you receive, documents, et cetera, are disclosed at the public meeting. It's not enough simply to say, "I met with this constituent, and we discussed the matter." It's very important that any and all information that another party would be interested in responding to also be shared within the public meeting. The last thing I would like to remind the Planning Commission is to be aware of any situation that might appear to violate the open meeting laws. Anytime there's a quorum present, which is for more members and, you know, business, Planning Commission business is discussed, that requires a notification, it requires it to be conducted in an open setting for the public's information. So with that being said, be very careful about serial communications. A citizen might contact Planning Commissioner Lassiter, and he certainly may then speak to Planning Commissioner Marsh, but you don't want a situation where perhaps you're speaking to three other individuals. Now, you arguably have a quorum. Granted, it's, maybe your intent wasn't to conduct public business behind closed doors, but there might be appearance, so that's always kind of my rule of thumb. If it appears that somehow you're getting around the requirement of having open meeting, just don't do it. It may not be your intent, there's no nefarious intent, but it's just better to err on the side of caution so that there's not a complaint filed.
And just to be clear, what you, the direction you just gave us applies not just to verbal communication, but also emails?
Yes, emails, telephone calls, and again, you will, you're not precluded from discussing with one another issues that might arise, but there've just been situations, not in this community or even in this state, but there's case law where one commissioner has gone to one, and then the next person, the next person, because they really wanted to reach a consensus before the item was even presented before the public body, and that's what we want to avoid.
All right. Any questions for Michelle? All right, thank you very much, Michelle. Right back up. PJ, I guess that brings us to chickens?
Chickens, yes. It is on the front page of the Rapid City Journal this morning, but that has to do with lead, allowing chickens in their city limits. But similar to us, we talked with the ordinance officer, he's received since January no less than fifteen phone calls about chickens, basically neighbors complaining about neighbors, and we have three valid chicken complaints from neighbors that require a lot of time from our staff. There are even court-deemed legal non-conforming chickens in the county because neighbors were not getting along, didn't have anything to do with our office. Basically, chickens are becoming front and center in our office, and we have a large animal ordinance, but it's not really doing what we need it to do. So we're basically wanting to have a dialogue with you to see if a ordinance pertaining to chickens and other animals might be something appropriate, and because it is such an issue for us, it is something that we would want to do prior to the comprehensive plan being finished.
I think it's probably a good idea because I have a feeling you're going to hear more and more about chickens. I don't know, Michelle, maybe you've got some more insight to this.
This is just the beginning. There's a lot of different ways to go with this because people own horses, people own pigs, they own goats.
Hot-bellied pigs, there's all kinds of exotic animals that are pets, so I can see where this might end up going.
Yes.
We, Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, myself and a few members of the Planning Department were discussing this matter last week, and in my review of the current statute, it really doesn't address the situation and the future problems that are going to occur. The statute, which is two oh four, or ordinance, which is two oh four G, only deals with the stabling of livestock or large animals. It doesn't address the maintaining or keeping of such animals. And then it also defines large animals, bovine, equine, or the equivalent of five sheep or a hundred chickens. Well, this statute was adopted in nineteen eighty-two, and since then, clearly, our community has continued to grow, and we have residential developments that have surrounded and encroached upon what was traditionally agricultural property. With that being said, in some of these neighborhoods, we could easily see neighbors who may be there, and this ordinance is limited to a half-acre. You could easily see situations, and maybe that's what's occurring, where you have residential homes on half-acre lots, and the neighbor has ninety-nine chickens, therefore, they're not required to be cooped. Could create a lot of problems, not just, again, with chickens, but horses, cows, et cetera. So one thought was, well, a couple ideas, do we want to create a whole separate ordinance, or do we want to look at explicitly stating when chickens, other types of keeping of animals, might be express conditional use depending on the district? Then, in that instance, someone who wants to keep chickens would have to seek a CUP, and then the neighbors could, would be notified and would be able to come in and weigh in, and whether that CUP would be appropriate for that particular neighborhood. Because clearly, if your homes are on three-acre lots versus half-acre lots, that certainly may impact your neighbor and impact whether it's an appropriate use for that property. So those are just a few thoughts, and we are seeking guidance from the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners on how you would like to move forward.
Any ideas, any comments?
Does Rapid City have an ordinance against chickens? I know it went around and around a few years ago, but...
And it was on the front page of the paper several times, and it was almost as if, I think they do, because I recall reading, "If you want to have chickens, you need to move out into the county." They don't delaw it.
I like the conditional use permit idea. It gives us a chance to review every one of them, I guess.
Speaking a little counter to that position on the CUP, I think that it seems to me that landowners should have some confidence that if they meet certain criteria, for example, if they're in the right kind of zoning and land use, and they've got the right-sized property, and they meet these other ordinance, you know, requirements and regulations, they need to know that they're going to get to have chickens, or whatever the case might be. So I guess I'm thinking, without, my knee-jerk reaction here is that this should be a permit of right, is that what the term is, that rather than conditional use permit? Because, but there has to be requirements. You have to have so many acres, and you have to have this, and this, and this, and if you do, you get chickens. And the neighbors can't say, "No, you don't get chickens." So I guess I'd like to at least take, bring this along a little bit and see if that could be crafted without having to go to the conditional use permit process.
And along those lines, we have recently, in several issues, taken a look at how things have been done previously, the status quo, and looking at whether that's the proper way to move forward, and I would agree with the earlier comments. I think the signed CUP that was early addressed would most likely be more appropriate as a variance, but those are the kind of things we have been addressing, including with home occupation. Currently, because of the gap in our ordinances, it's my opinion that we would have to move forward under kind of our catch-all phrase on CUPs. We don't have anything that explicitly allows chickens or disallows them, and so right now, if someone wanted to have chickens under our current ordinances, I would say you need to apply for a CUP. It may not be identified as conditional use, but the question then would be whether it's within the intent of the existing conditional uses of a property within that district. So that's kind of where we're at.
But ordinance, that ordinance could be changed down the way at some point to more clearly define what would be an acceptable use. And, I mean, I can understand if somebody, if the condition, if the use is for no more than ten, and they wanted twelve, well, then that, of course, would trigger the CUP, but it could be done down the road, looking at that.
But that's why we're seeking direction from you.
So today, you want to know how to go forward until we figure out something, either through the Board of Commissioners or till we set up a committee? Because I was on the Alternative Energy Committee, and I've been on the Mining Committee, so are you looking for us to maybe even establish a committee to move forward and look at that ordinance and kind of flesh it out a little bit? Is that what you would like?
Definitely a possibility. We still have to bring this before the Board, though, before we do something like that.
Ron, just so you know, if it comes to you guys on the Board, I'd be interested in being a part of that. I'm a small farmer rancher out in New Underwood, so, but I would definitely like to be a part of that.
I, you know, I agree with Kathy that it would be nice to have a set, I mean, I hate to have conditional use permits, too, because it comes before this Board, it comes before the County Commission, and it always opens it up to, "Well, we're going to give it to you. We don't particularly like you, so we're not going to give it to you." You know, it's the same situation, but to have one set of rules that fit everybody, it's going to be difficult out in our county, I think, but, you know, if something works for it, I guess that's, it can be done.
I think it'd be better to have at least some guideline for some of the smaller animals because right now, we only have something that's a guideline for large animals. Outside of that, it's, everything else is a, well, how is it going to be today? So I agree. So if you bring it to them, if you can, I'll put a plug in there, I'd be willing to sit on that committee or whatnot. Anybody else?
Don't worry, there are not going to be that many volunteers. You'll get your chance.
Mr. Chair, I have some questions.
Go ahead, Rich.
I guess I'm just curious of the process of coming up with this. Does it take a motion of this Board to request you guys to start on an ordinance regarding such thing, or...
In the past, when we've been looking for the Planning Commission's support, we've asked, they've made a motion to that effect. We're still in the very beginning stages of this.
It's not required, but we thought this was an important enough issue that we should seek your guidance.
I think it could get messy really quick. So I like the idea of having at least a baseline, is what I would call it, ordinance, where this is, this was the goal when everybody discussed it on this date, to do these, and then if things happen from a conditional use permit, you know, to handle the cases where things don't fit a hundred percent within that. But I like the idea of having an ordinance, having that stuff written down, and not having it be as loose as it is. So if we need a motion, I would be more than willing to do so. If we don't need one, I don't want to...
I don't think we need one at this point in time. There's not any kind of formal outline, if you will, of anything that they want done. Now, if PJ comes back to us and says, "Hey, we'd like to look at it this way," as moving forward until something happens with the Board of Commissioners, then we'd entertain that and consider a motion based on any outline factors that you'd like for us to consider.
In any jurisdiction where this has come up, if you look at this stuff, I mean, it's a hot topic.
Chickens have been around for a while.
Yeah, some cities in South Dakota don't even deal with it. They just prohibit them altogether. Some put a specific number on them, some say you have to go through, what is the one the sheriff's one?
Yeah, it's basically, some even have ratios. My name is Mike King, I'm your ordinance officer, by the way. I am the Chicken Whisperer, I speak to all of them across the land. So basically, what we have here is, we're not like a city entity, of course. The city of Rapid says, "No chickens." They can do that. We're in the county, we don't want to do that because people expect that lifestyle, right? Although we do have ones in the valley, but, and that's where a lot of it stems from. Give you some history, we got ones in the valley, and a lot of times, those people, those chickens have been there three, four years. They don't even know if they're there because they're hens. First rooster pops up, well, you know, now the neighborhood knows it, and that becomes, that's when it becomes an issue. Haven't had that many in the hills, but I do have a lot of new people moving in. A lot of people don't like chickens, or poultry, or turkeys, or whatever you want to call it. So I reckon stemming from here, the guidance was, because what Michelle was speaking about is this ordinance that we have, we're not only talking chickens here now, we're talking animals, we're talking horses. Okay, so we're not, yeah. The ordinance that we have now specifically states and talks about penning, corralling, that kind of thing, right, Michelle?
Correct.
Okay, so I can read it verbatim, but when we step off on this, right, this exempts agriculture. Agriculture basically says, and within its, you know, language, it actually defines, well, we can call it farm animals, right? Basically, it allows farm animals. When you go into these other SRDs and the different residentials, there's nothing in there. So that's where, that's kind of where we're at. Right now, it's kind of all or none, it's kind of, and it's always been looked at, previous to me, previous to that person, you know, half-acre was the benchmark, but looking into the more detail of it, that's where the guidance comes, because I know, I don't know if you're ag, but, you know, if you're not, and you have five acres, you have two horses. You were fine before because you were over half an acre. The problem now becomes, it might not be, it might be SRD. And now, we have to look at, okay, or that's where the conditional use permit would allow that. Now, that's not saying there's not going to be an ordinance that comes out, but it has to be articulated because it's the county. It has to be articulated the correct way, but we need something, we need something now to kind of make it what we can allow or work with the future so these people can continue. Now, I don't, I'm like you guys, I mean, conditional use, it gives us, you guys are going, the Commissioners are going to have to hear it, you guys got to hear it, it does have to work through this process. But right now, when somebody asks me, "Can you have chickens?", well, I've got to have an answer, other than a conditional use, or a variance, or something like that. That's where I'm at.
So are you suggesting right now, we do it, conditional use, until we kind of draft something minimal?
I would like for it to go, at least in these other zones, for farm animals, how we, how it's written in the ag, for, could be used as a conditional use, right, under that paragraph.
I think actually, that's, given the ordinances as they stand, that's, that would be the proper procedure. You have, you know, express allowed uses, and you have conditional uses. Well, in two oh four F, the statutes, the ordinance specifically states that other uses may be allowed which are not listed, provided they are not contrary to the intent of the district in which they are to be located. So that we have nothing that prohibits... So, that we have nothing that prohibits having, um, chickens or other farm animals, but they're not under allowed use of, say, suburban or light residential districts. So my position would be that if someone came to the Planning Department and they want fifty chickens, that presently, they would need to come to the Planning Commission and seek a conditional use, pending, um, it, under, under our general ordinance of two oh four and the general provisions that apply to all districts. And again, this, this, this excludes agricultural, that's, that's an allowed use, that they would have to seek a CUP, at least until we come up with, um, new, a new ordinance to address the situation.
And this would be primarily in your residential districts, right, is what you're looking at? The ones that don't allow for ag, any of the districts that don't allow for ag?
They may be, I'm not. Because the same issue that came up during the vacation ordinance is you have ag properties zoned, or in acreage less than a residential property. So to be fair, we'd have to come up with some type of acreage for ag. Because you have forty acre SRDs, and you have half, and you have half acre, uh, general ag. So it wouldn't, it, it's the same issue we ran into with the VHRs. So we'd have to address that somehow.
So what I'm asking is basically, is a stopgap right now? Give us something, and then we're gonna have to, it's gonna take a lot of research and everything else, because a lot of cities have done a lot of research, and it's, we just need, I need something now, right? Or, or something other than what we have.
Do CUPs help you right now?
CUPs would help me, because CUPs, I can say, "Look," instead of, because, take for instance, we have one up in the hills. When I was looking at the actual rule or regulation, we were basing it upon half acre, right? Well, they're on point four seven acres. Well, so to work with the neighbors and everything, I thought, at that time, we were looking for a half acre. That was the magic number. If you have a half acre, so we were gonna go, we were gonna go forward with a variance, to go in front, to say, "Okay, you don't have a half acre, you come ask for a variance for the land to give you your four pet chickens," right, because that's what we're talking about. Looking at this and everything now, I've had to change my thought process, because it's not a variance. It's, it's now would have to be a conditional use, because the land is a little piece of this pie, it's not the full thing. The conditional use would give me, would give them something. And then again, I can actually control it somewhat, because of the neighbors. I can say, "You know what, these, look, you, you gotta clean this, the, you can't have poop running around, okay, whatever." So it gives me a little, but it does give me that baseline now, that which I don't have now, which is kind of hard to regulate as it is.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, but I'm a little confused up here, because let's, let's just use, um, suburban residential as an example. If you look at the, um, the permitted uses, it doesn't address dogs. And so, I mean, it doesn't say you can only have two dogs, or three cats, or something. So why, you don't have to get a conditional use permit to have a few dogs. So why would you need a conditional use permit to have a few chickens?
So basically, what that is, there's another ordinance that follows under domesticated animals, which Animal Control runs, okay? So that's a whole, it is an ordinance, we do have a county ordinance, but the Animal Control runs it. There are regulations upon that, you know, talking about kennel, talking about the rabies, talking about licensing, and those type of things. So there is one, but it's not explicit to this. So it's, I know that, you know, when you're talking farm animals, we're, we're mainly talking about chickens. But, you know, and the big thing, that's, that's what the hot topic is now, because everybody wants five chickens to lay eggs and have their own eggs, I get it. But those are two different entities, and I'm just, that's, no.
One thing that, so you know, Commissioner, that will come up, is there are domesticated chickens as pets that are walked on leashes.
Yes, there are.
We have to address that as well.
And there's also domesticated pigs, pot-bellied pigs primarily. Interestingly enough, they're using them for, uh, diabetes detection. So because of their sense of smell, they can actually, I mean, there's some, what would be considered normal farm animals are being used for other different reasons, and so I can see where that we're gonna have to at least have it addressed somehow. Commissioner Busker.
Yeah, to complicate this, we all know that Scottsdale is the premier site to, to live in, in Phoenix. We rented a place down there about four years ago for a couple weeks, and we woke up in the morning to the braying of a burrow next door. Uh, you can have horses in Scottsdale, because there are approved horse trails all throughout the town. And so the property we had right next door had a horse, a burrow, and I don't know if it had chickens or not, but, I mean, it stunk, and it was not a good place to rent, I'm gonna tell you. But, uh, just, you know, it happens, and, and I guess it's been the case ever since Scottsdale was founded, that you could have horses in town, and you can.
For the Planning Commissioners that don't know, it's nice that we have Mike to be able to handle this. He was a game warden in Florida for many years, so he's dealt with animals before. First one to say, I think, hyena during an interview, too.
And I don't know if Mike's just looking for approval to handle these matters in that, in the fashion he's proposed as a conditional use, but I don't think that requires any motion with regards to change your ordinance. As I said, I think it can be addressed as a catch-all, since it's not an identified conditional use. They, they would have to apply for a conditional use, and this Planning Commission would then address whether it's within the intent of that district, and the impact on neighbors, et cetera. So I don't know, perhaps Mike is simply looking for perhaps just some sort of approval of his, his handling any situations pending a new ordinance in that manner?
Well, my opinion is that that's what we pay PJ to make, uh, decisions be, on, on the ordinances we've passed, and for you to give him good advice on it. And, uh, that's where I'd leave it.
And that's my advice, that's, uh, that was my opinion when we raised this issue on Friday, is that until we, uh, graft and approve, um, an ordinance to address this issue, that any issues that, you know, generally based upon complaints, that they'd be addressed through the CUP process.
Challenge for us is gonna be coming up with the conditions. What is the criteria, what's the correct number in that certain zoning district? So it's gonna be a challenge.
I believe that Sioux Falls approved chickens in their, in their municipality. So, um, you know, there's, there are, um, there are best practices out there, so to speak, that could be looked at and borrowed from, perhaps.
I'm just wondering how, how often this has been coming up? Relatively new?
At least the last seven years, I've been seeing it all around here. I've been here for eight.
Yeah, so basically, I've been on the job here for two years, and I started off with a chicken complaint. So basically, it's, uh, it's a very interesting dynamic, going from exotic animals to chickens, but, uh, I'm trying to work through it. So, but no, it's been, for me, it's been two years. Prior to that, I'm sure it came up, it wasn't really documented where I could actually see and give you any kind of number.
But in frequency, like, is it, oh, weekly, monthly, or?
So what it is, is, okay, so this year, I know I fielded at least fifteen calls. This year, I've handled four, that, over the summer. So mainly, it's the summer, because winter, you know, the chickens are put up and, and they're a little warm nesting, whatever. So, but usually in the summer, when it comes out, uh, when the biddies come out, they go get them a biddy, they raise them a chicken, it crows, get rid of that one, keep a hen, that kind of thing. But that's basically where you're at. So it's, it's ongoing, it's just picked up now. There's, there's more now in the hills than there were before. I can say that now, because the Green Valley, or the Valley, and Green, and all that, that's, that's on its, you know, that's, they're close together. But this is the first time I've dealt with them, I've had two, actually three, three in the hills, it's themselves, okay? So, uh, it's growing. Uh, it is.
Well, as the population grows, and people want to move here for that, you know, ag or lifestyle, that's what's coming with it, so.
All right. Anything further?
Thank you, Papa Chicken.
All right. Carries us to items from the membership. Anyone from the membership have anything? Nope? Then I guess I would entertain a motion, a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, thank you.